All right, thank you. Pursuant to section seven E of the Open Meetings Act, I as President of the McHenry County Conservation District have determined that an in-person meeting is not practical or prudent at this time because of the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic and Governor Pritzker's related disaster declaration. I have further determined that the physical presence of an employee or member of the public body at the regular meeting location is not feasible due to the disaster described in the government declaration. With that, I will call the meeting to order. And I think we have a pledge scheduled again in here. It didn't go very smoothly the last time. I don't know how it'll work this time, but we'll try it again. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
That's an experience.
Yes. Okay, roll call please.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Dom?
Here.
Trustee Thomas?
Here.
Trustee Brand?
Here.
Trustee Fritz?
Here.
Trustee Campbell?
Here.
Trustee Henning?
Here. With that, Dave Brandt, could you do the conservation ethic goal?
I would be delighted to foster a conservation ethic among McHenry County citizens, helping all of us regardless of the basis of our interest in nature to develop a greater awareness of our role in and responsibility for the total community of life. Conservation ethic asks us to assume a moral duty to become educated about conservation issues and then act on that information. Conservation ethic is an attitude that recognizes the importance of preserving the natural heritage of the county's open space.
Right ahead to goal one, too, would you please?
I'm sorry, John, what?
Go ahead on goal one also.
Okay. Oh, yeah, to preserve native plants and animals, geological features, and natural ecosystems that are threatened or endangered in McHenry County, and to reclaim such ecosystems that have been degraded for the benefit of present and future generations and for their own sake.
Thank you, Dave.
You bet.
And Bill, could you use a conservation stewardship pledge, please? And number 11.
We pledge to make a difference by standing up for our water, wildlife, and way of life in McHenry County. Our quality of life in McHenry County depends on healthy and sustainable natural resources, thoughtfully developed cities and towns, a strong economy, and beautiful outdoor places to explore, discover, and recreate. We will manage public lands through science and in a manner that is responsive and resilient to a changing climate.
Thank you, Bill. I would now entertain a motion to adopt the agenda, please.
To move.
I'll second.
Lynn and Dave, I think that was Lynn. What is it, Dave? And I need a roll call vote for that, please.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Dom?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Brand?
Yes.
Trustee Henning?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, we are moving on to recognition of employee service anniversaries. Elizabeth, are you leading us in that?
Yes, thank you. So this year, we have, as we normally do, we recognize our team members that are having milestone anniversaries with the district. And this year, we have individuals at the five-year mark, all the way up to a 30-year mark. And I would just like to acknowledge them. It's in your board packet, but I'll read them aloud. And some of them are here this evening. We'll start with our five years. We have Linda Bryant, Cindy Rendell, and Mary Jo Lucas Healy. So we congratulate them on five years of service. For 10 years, we have two employees, Kurt Klinger and Mike Schultz. And with us this evening, celebrating 20 years, is our Director of Operations and Public Safety, John Kramer.
Woo-hoo!
So, John, 20 years of service here at the district.
Very good.
At the 25-year mark, we have Kim Compton. And 30 years, we have John Peters.
Woo-hoo!
Congratulations to all those amazing milestones of tenure with the organization, a lot of educational knowledge that they bring with them. So again, congratulations. And they will be getting recognition of their milestones through the mail this year due to COVID.
Well, thank you to all those staff people that are dedicated. And it is an unusual year. I'm sure out of all the years they've served, this is one of the more unusual ones. But thank you to all of them. Then we get to move on to our own Dave Brandt here that's got 10 years of serving on this board. And so could you fill me in a little bit on how the IAPD, did you receive your, what are you receiving there, Dave?
I saw a plaque, but yeah, they had a little PowerPoint. And I saw my fat little body standing right there, so it was kind of fun. It was a nice little presentation, I have to admit.
Very nice.
But I'm in good company. Martha Carver, Bill Howenstein, Bonnie Leahy, Craig Candle.
I saw those.
Pretty neat group.
Those are great names, yes, to be associated with. That's very good. And I know you've got more years of service than that because you've served even when you haven't been on the board. So I know you've got more than 10 years in there.
Thank you, John.
But that's great. So and you're very enthusiastic, and I appreciate that. That's wonderful.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Okay, now we're going to move on to Natural Heritage Stewardship Report. Who is Ed leading that, or are you Elizabeth, or who is doing that one?
Ed, our Director of Land Preservation and Natural Resources, is going to give you an update on an exciting, they've been doing this. This will be the second time that you get a big cumulative report on the great science and research. So Ed, take it away.
I thought it was very well done, Ed, very well done.
Thank you, Dave. I hope everyone can hear me. And can everyone see the screen?
Yes, you're doing great.
Yes.
All right, that's good to hear. So this is the Natural Heritage Report that will cover the period from April 1st of 2019 through March 31st of this year. Although maybe it's noted as a draft, we really have finished up just about everything on it. And there'll be some, probably some minor corrections and some photos added. So if you approve it tonight, you're pretty much seeing what's going to be approved. There are many larger reports that go into the makeup of the Natural Heritage Report. So I condensed them down to the highlights. Some of the reports that are part of it, like the Wildlife and Plant Ecology Report, for example, are themselves close to 100 pages long. So what I'll typically do is make those larger reports available. So if anybody's really interested in them, they can link into them through the district's website. And they make some pretty interesting reading, especially if one of those topics has to be something that you are really interested in. As I go through this, I would encourage you to ask any questions you might have. Ask them right at the time you have them, and I'll do my best to answer them. So I'll start by saying that this is the preface to this report. And John, I think you summed it up just a few minutes ago. This is unlike any year that I think I've ever seen, and I've been here 35 years. But I included this for a reason. I have worked with district staff over those three and a half decades on some pretty amazing projects and have been impressed by the way they've done those projects and been dedicated to them. But this year, in and of itself, is a pretty amazing thing. So it's hard to really put into words watching an organization from the trustees through every level of the organization down to our folks in the field pull together in such a challenge. And not only weather it, which we're still in, but weather it with good humor and professionalism and still strive to move the agency's mission forward. And I guess I would say of all the achievements that I have been through at the district, this may rank as probably without precedent in all that time. So I think we have a lot to be proud of, just by the way our staff is and our board has handled this whole emergency. Each year, I try to put in a new technology highlight because science changes so dramatically. Last year, we looked at all the watersheds in the United States lit up. This year, I chose to bring you a piece of LiDAR information. And LiDAR stands for Light Detection and Ranging Remote Sensing. This is done with satellites. And basically, the satellite pings the earth. And depending on the distance from where it pings the surface of the earth back to the satellite, it creates a map of a three-dimensional map. And so this is Henry County with LiDAR. And you can see that on the western edge of the county, there's the Marengo Ridge. As you go east, you see the chain of lakes. See that big flat area where Crystal Lake is that everybody drives on 176 between 47 and Marengo? And then on the western part of the county, you can see sort of a pinkish area at the northwest. And that's the part of our county that's 100,000 years older than the rest. And it's easy to see where the glacier stalled when you're using this kind of map. I bring it up because we have started to utilize these maps in managing the county's resources. So there's always something new happening in technology, and we try to keep up on it and see what it will give us in terms of understanding what's out there on the landscape. So I won't cover everything in the report. I'll just cover some of the major areas. Our work is driven in natural resources by the natural ecosystem management policy. And I just put the primary goal up there for a couple of reasons. The first is that it was adopted by our board in 1985 and was the first of its kind in the country. It actually looked at the science of the time and said, what we should be doing with land is not just protecting it, but trying to manage it back to the best ecological health that we possibly can. And that's been our guide for our work over the past three and a half decades. I also underline best possible approximations because sometimes there's a misunderstanding out there that the district is trying to put every bush and every tree back to where it was in 1837. And actually, what we're really trying to do is we're trying to manage land with the same natural forces that shaped it to begin with. Because the ground has memory, the natural communities know how to function with those types of inputs like fire and hydrology. And that allows it to take care of itself in a lot of ways in the long run. So this is our guidepost for the work that we do here. And I'll talk first about land protection. There are some big players for land protection in McHenry County. And the Conservation District is certainly probably the largest one in terms of acres. But there are significant acreages that are set aside by a number of players. And I've only called out a few of them here, mostly because the district deals with them on a regular basis. And I'll start with the Department of Natural Resources, which is second on this list. This year, the Department of Natural Resources threw some good legwork by Val Seiler and other members in LPNR. And were able to utilize some very scarce land acquisition funds called the Natural Areas Acquisition Fund. And the state was able to pick up 56 acres at the west end of Lake Elizabeth. And the district has sought that land for probably 30 years. We don't have the resources to pick it up. It is adjacent to our existing site, and it will make management of that site incredibly easier compared to what it is now. And IDNR, one of our partners, picked that up. So those partnerships often pay dividends for the district and for the taxpayers. The Nature Preserves Commission worked with us this year to get Alden Sedge Meadow set aside as an Illinois nature preserve. The Land Conservancy of McHenry County is one of our regular partners. And they closed on a piece of property with a conservation easement of about 80 acres adjoining our Alden Gap site. So they were able to pick up and protect the upper part of the stream that flows through our site. So these types of partnerships build one on another over time. And the district doesn't always have to be the prime mover in protecting land. Often, we're a partner and sometimes a minor partner in a project. But because there's input from organizations working towards the same goals, we're able to share that, the burden and the resources of protecting land. Probably the biggest players this year in land protection in McHenry County have been a combination of the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and Open Lands. Open Lands secured a grant that is a three-year running grant. It's actually a double grant of about $6 million. And it's specifically to protect and manage land that's in the footprint of the Hackmatac National Wildlife Refuge. That's important to us because that refuge touches a half a dozen of our sites. And it's designed to help build out those sites in the long run as one block of conservation land with various owners. So this year, Open Lands was able to close on 243 acres. The district did not spend a dime of McHenry County taxpayer money for those acreages to be set aside. It included four parcels that have been on our long-term protection list for decades, and they adjoined three of our sites. So land was protected at Winding Creek, at Alden Gap, and Glacial Park. And they will form part of a greater conservation hole on those sites. So those partnerships are very important to what we do in land protection. And just to kind of highlight one of those other misnomers that are out there about the district buying up land everywhere, what I have here for you to look at is the lowest cumulative acreages that the district has protected over its entire history. And I pulled out the 20 years with the lowest number of acres. And what you can see is that many of those years, in fact, eight of the 20 have occurred since 2011. And when we look at the top 10 lowest acreages, five out of the 10 have occurred in the last decade. So we are still working on preserving land, and we're being very successful at it. And the question is how? And the how is because we have evolved our land protection strategies to deal with limited funds and with limited ability to be able to get those funds. So every project that we bring to you typically has one or more of these components with it. We use alternative funding, and that could be grants, bequests, conservation buyers, easements. There's a whole list of them. As I already mentioned, our partnerships have grown larger and more diverse over the years, including our own foundation. And we only look for very strategic parcels. So when we bring a project to the board, it's already gone through an awful lot of vetting before we bring it to you to look at. So we're bringing you projects that are doable, affordable, and help fill out the long-term protection goals of the district. And I'll use the Alden Gap property as an example. And the reason for that is that was one of the parcels that we were able to complete this year. It is the Kennedy Track, and it was actually purchased by one of our partners, Ducks Unlimited, as part of the larger grant at that site. And Ducks Unlimited sold it to the district at the bargain price after they had put a parking lot in it, handicap accessible. And they sold it to us for 80% of what they paid for it, and the 80% was picked up by Illinois Clean Energy. So this is the way we're doing conservation these days and protecting land. And the operational parameters for that project, I think, sort of tell the story. The site was a strategic conservation opportunity area, had lots of resources. We used multiple partners. It had high-value habitats on it. It was on a stream corridor that linked it into other existing public and private conservation sites. It was 100% funded outside of our operational dollars. So none of those dollars that we are looking at and trying to figure out how we can squeeze them harder were used for that land protection project. It had no structures, which I think makes our sites and fleets and operations folks happy. It makes us happy, too. And the restoration costs for that site were 100% funded from grants. And because we were able to use it as a wetland mitigation project for MICTA. So we were able to use the funds that came from that to help finance the restoration that needed to be done on the property. So we're trying as much as possible on these projects to cover as many of the cost bases as possible. There's a lot of work that goes on with land protection after a piece of property has been purchased and restored. There's just a lot of stuff that comes up that's related to real estate and using our property. So our land preservation manager is very busy all the time dealing with these types of things as well as our land protection projects. So this year, the district worked nine intergovernmental agreements on a variety of things. We had 21 permits that had to be issued that impacted district lands. And that could be everything from pipeline repairs to tree trimming under comm ed lines. We had 59 land issues reviewed, and this is a really polite way of saying encroachments, where someone is doing something on district property that they probably shouldn't be doing, and that has to be reviewed and it has to be taken care of. We strive very hard to work it out and never have it become something that requires legal action. A lot of times, people just don't know the boundaries. But each one of them has to be looked at, so that keeps us busy. And then we had three larger threats of a bigger nature that had to be analyzed to see how they might impact district resources long term. So that's the business of land protection outside of the actual land protection. We move into science at this point. And science for the district includes monitoring what we already have, inventorying those lands to see what exists on them and how things are changing, and pure research to help us have a feedback loop into our management work so we know what's working, what isn't working, and how we might tweak it. It's adaptive management, and it's always changing based on what the land is telling us. And I put this chart up, and you see it from time to time over the years. It shows up in various reports that we do to you. But this is where things stand right now in terms of our database. Now, our database had zero information in it in 2001. Everything was in filing cabinets. But as of this year, we have over a million pieces of individual biological data in that database. We've identified almost 340,000 or plus different species, 740,000 individual animals or plants, and 8,777 biological surveys. McHenry County, far and away, has the most comprehensive inventories of what lives here than any county in Illinois. And this includes everything from lichens and mosses all the way up to birds and mammals and the larger creatures. So it's well-studied, and the repeated surveys on those same groups help us know, are things going up? Are things going down? How is the land reacting to our management? Biological surveys, as I mentioned, are a big part of it. And I won't go into every one that we do in the course of a year. There's lots of them. I'll just cover a couple here. We have been involved with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service for 30 years on efforts to bring back the prairie white-fringed orchid. And we have five sites that have the orchid in McHenry County. It's federally threatened. And you can see one of our staff members hand pollinating those orchids so we can get the maximum seed production to establish new populations. We had one site down this year, but we also in parcel two. And we masked their locations because we have had plant diggers in the past come and try to dig up orchids. But we had the largest number ever in parcel two, 413 individual orchids bloomed. We work with different animal groups, and we have been involved this year with, actually for the past three or four years, with the DuPage County Forest Preserve Urban Stream Research Center. And the research center is actually trying to figure out how to grow mussels. And because McHenry County streams are the richest in the north half of the state in remaining mussel diversity, we partner with them, kidnap gravid mussels, take them back to the center, shake out the young basically into fish tanks, and then return them back into the wild. And the Stream Center raises the young. And you can see folks have in their hand a group of what are called the creeper mussel, which is in steep decline all over its range. And the young came from McHenry County, and they're being put back in after they've grown to a releasable size at the Stream Center.
Hey, Ed, and the white-fringed orchid, didn't Cindy put cameras out there to identify the moth, that sole pollinator? I thought that was pretty cool.
Yeah, and actually, I think we brought that to you last year. And that was a real surprise because there was some fear that that pollinator moth was extinct. And so we were able to establish that, at least locally, it's still pollinating our moths, our orchids. The hand pollinating is designed to make sure we get the maximum number of seed capsules.
Perfect.
So what does all of that research tell us in inventory and the different studies that we do? It tells us what kind of trends are going on the landscape. And I'll talk about a couple of different trends here. All of our rare plant populations are monitored. And this year, we were able to monitor all of them and then determine based on the past information we've had from repeated surveys, how many populations are stable, how many are increasing, and how many are decreasing. And that decreasing number of plant populations is concerning. We know the reason sometimes, we don't know the reason other times. And so what we did is we were able to put together 100 separate projects to manage these areas where these rare plants are at. And the graph on the left shows you the number of management projects that we need to get done, what regions they're in, and how we're tracking on them. And sometimes the management that we do is just removing brush, and we see that population rebound. Other times, there's problems that we don't have any control over, like genetic inbreeding on plant populations. But this helps us know, it's a scorecard on how things are doing. We also, this year, re-sampled for the third time plots that were established in the savannas at Glacial Park the day we began management in 1986. It's one of the longest-running plot studies anywhere in the Midwest. We have 35 years of data. And what it's telling us is the 50 plots that we sample, we sample the overstory, the shrub layer, and the herbaceous layer, is that wherever we've done management, we see all the indicators we're looking for going up in a positive direction. And in the control plots where we haven't done management, we see those indicators going in the other direction. And this is important because the study is done over a long period of time. And these communities take time to react to the management. So we'll be sharing this data with the rest of the region and comparing it to a couple other sites across the region where there are similar age plots to see if we can see trends that cover the whole Chicago region. Land management is what I'm going to cover next. And the rough acres you see on the bottom for these different types of land categories are just that. They're rough acres. I'm not trying to present down to the half acre on what's being managed. But generally speaking, this is where we're at. So we break it down into categories for ease of management for the division. These are not categories that are used across the board by the district in every division, but they're helpful for us. So we have farm fields and pastures, site development areas, habitat opportunity areas, which are areas we haven't gotten to yet, but we are going to in the future, and then our high-quality and restored areas. And then below, you can see how many acres in each that's receiving management. So farm habitat BMPs goes to what we talked about earlier in the evening. This is not just farmland. This is resource-rich land, and it's contributing to the overall diversity of the county. Our field borders, our grass waterways, our CRP, our hay ground, our joint grassland venture, they're providing income and farming for the county's operators. But they're also having a significant contribution to the biodiversity of the county, to the way we're managing the land. So we count them as just what they are, they're resource-rich areas. Our high-quality areas are the best stuff we have. Restored areas are those areas that are coming along. We're really working hard on them. And working landscapes is our working farmland. And we count it as a resource management area because that farmland work, plowing and growing crops on it every year, keeps it in a condition that's going to allow us at some point to either move it into regenerative agriculture, which I'll talk about in a minute, or it'll allow us to move it into a different habitat of some type in the future. So you can see we're doing pretty good. 20,000 out of the 25,000 some acres the district has is being managed at some level or another. This was probably the most frustrating year our division has ever had for prescribed burning. It's the worst year I have experienced in almost 40 years of burning. The spring or the fall of 2019 was cold and damp, and there were virtually no burn days. And then COVID-19 shut us down before the burn season got started. So our burn acreage for these two burning seasons, which are covered under this report, is two burns and 90 acres. We're very hopeful that that's just an anomaly of weird circumstances coming together because burning is the cheapest form of management that we have. One thing I will add, we were not able to use it because of COVID-19. But our volunteer coordinator, who the board moved to full-time a couple of years ago, was able to organize the rest of the forest preserves in the region into a prescribed burning class that runs a week long for college students. So they will sign onto the different forest preserves and conservation districts, and they'll be trained in prescribed burning over a week's time. And they will provide And they will provide us with an additional twelve to twenty people for burning during the burn season. Now, we didn't get to do that this spring, obviously for obvious reasons, but we're geared up to do it next spring, and we're hoping that that's going to happen. And that's one creative way to expand our staff. Seeding projects and seed collection, we had forty-four projects this year. They totaled about five hundred acres. And you can see on the left of the first graph, we we break them down by different types of projects. So it's everything from enriching what we have with additional species down to this year, we got six hundred thousand dollars worth of planting from USDA to enrich wetland reserve areas that we put into wetland reserve in the nineteen nineties. And they sow that those areas down in pollinator mix. So there's all kinds of different projects that go on. There were forty-four, almost five hundred acres. If you look at the seed collection, there's some interesting things going on there, too, that I want to point out. You could see that that this year we collected a hundred and eleven different species. The value of those species, and we use the cheapest prices that we can get and not the most expensive. We use the the most conservative nursery as a comparison. We collected over a hundred thousand dollars worth of seed. Now, that's staff on machines and volunteers. Six, almost seventeen hundred pounds. And what what I think is more impressive is when you look at what has happened since two thousand and six, it's almost a million dollars worth of seed and over twelve thousand five hundred pounds. And all that seed has gone back onto district sites. So that's a pretty significant resource that's come at virtually no or little cost to the district because folks believe in the mission. So I want to talk a little bit about our working landscapes. And we have kind of a four-tiered step preparation process for for creating and maintaining healthy working lands. And our working lands is is our farmland. So I'm going to talk about tier one first. When the district buys farmland, and and we buy it typically when it's part of a larger acquisition or because it's critical to finish out a site, we often inherit land that is not in the best of condition. And so our job in the in the years following that acquisition, if the land doesn't have to be retired because of grant requirements, but it's going to move into our farm program, we try to move it first into sustainable farming, which is land that has a regular NRCS conservation plan developed and implemented on it, our field borders and our grass waterways. As time goes on, and we establish a working arrangement with the operators, we add additional practices. If if they're practical, if they make sense, and if they'll improve the land's health. And that's how we get to regenerative farmlands. I want to talk a little bit, too, about conversion to habitat. Not all the land that is in the farm program is going to be converted to permanent habitat anytime soon. And if we can move this this land into regenerative agriculture, it may well stay in agriculture for decades. I think what we're finding in conservation is there's an awful lot of ways that we can improve the health of the land, and good farming is one of those ways. So there's some exciting things going on with agriculture across the region and the interface with conservation. And I think that is a hallmark of that is the fact that we were able to do the first partnership project we've ever done with the Farm Bureau of McHenry County this year, and I'll talk a little bit about that later. For those of you who are are new to the process, under tier four, you'll see where it says high ACI scores, and that stands for the Agricultural Conservation Index, and I'll talk about that a little bit as we get towards the end. I just put one example up here that sort of helps understand what we mean by conventional versus sustainable versus regenerative. Because you can go online and get all kinds of definitions for what these things mean. And I just based this particular example on typical soil loss. And these two equations are are equations that are used very commonly to calculate soil loss tolerance and soil loss. So if you have conventional farming without any any conservation practices, it's not uncommon to to lose five to six tons of soil per acre. If you can move into just a few practices, like the field borders, contour farming, reduced tillage, filter strips, you go down to two to four, and if you can get to regenerative, you're either not losing soil or you're building soil. And that's the goal that we want to have over the next decade, decade and a half for district farmlands is to be able to get to where we're building soil, and we're building fertility, and we're increasing yields, and it's a win-win situation for our operators, for the land, and for the district. My last slide on this is kind of a thank you slide. We've been working for two years on what we call the Agricultural Conservation Index. And on the right is where our farm database started three years ago in a bunch of big filing cabinets that were very difficult to get information out of without spending a lot of time going through files. The board allowed us to 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 budget a little bit of extra part-time money last year, and we were able to complete the conversion of this data that was in file cabinets into a digital format. And that, in turn, has allowed us to move much, much closer to completing the Agricultural Conservation Index. We've now moved to a system where we have every field in the district identified, and we're able to track important things that are going to happen to it, like soil fertility, nutrient application, compaction, like Brad talked about earlier in the evening. And you're going to be some see some interesting changes coming in our farm program to help us track that in the next year or so. But we couldn't have done that without that little extra infusion of seasonal money to help us get that converted. And oh, there we go. I thought I was stuck. Okay. Okay. One of the other things that we worked on, and I hope this is going to pop up in a minute, that our division also keeps track of a lot of cultural information, and of course, so does our education staff and our planning staff. The part we take kind of take an interest in is actually doing oral interviews with people who used to farm our land when when they owned it or they grew up on our land, or they lived in a house that was on land that's now a conservation district site. So five years ago, again, using money that was part of a grant that we got that had been set aside for many years at the district called the Carl Mitchell Fund, we were able to put on a part-time person who converted all of the cassette tapes that we had of those interviews that stretched back to the seventies into a digital format and then start contacting other people who had lived on our sites at some point in their life and do more interviews with them. And we have far more than fifty stories for our fiftieth anniversary. And those are going to be part of that celebration, some of the information that's come through that. I just want to give you one brief example of how important that can be. One of the people that is is going to be interviewed next week had heard about this, gave the district a call. It got funneled through the right system. And what we discovered is one of the pieces of properties that we own has a set of Native American burial mounds on it. And we sort of suspected that was true, but we had no confirmation about it. And we were able to confirm that by an interview with this person. So you never know what kind of information is going to come out of these interviews, and they're just fascinating to listen to. And what they do is they continue the story of that land. It was wilderness. It was a farm at some point. If it was in McHenry County, it was definitely a farm at some point. And the story of that farm continues on to it being a conservation area. So there's a continuity that we don't lose because we're able to preserve those stories. One other one I want to add about that that we also finished this year. We were also able to scan over forty thousand land acquisition documents that are usually sitting in the pines over at Brookdale. So now when we have to pull out information on an old land acquisition, a lot of the most important stuff is digitized. And that's really important. Makes life a lot easier. Our Wildlife Resource Center handled twenty-one hundred phone calls this year from people, everything from raccoons in my fireplace to how do I get rid of this this opossum under my porch? They did a hundred and twenty-two public programs, almost three thousand people attended, and they're often in the schools, both digitally now and also in person. They took care of the lake and the Henry County Head Start Programs for Blanding's Turtles and the McHenry County Program for Green Snakes, where we hatch out at the center young turtles and young green snakes, and then reintroduce them into the wild. And in between all that, they managed to rehabilitate a hundred and thirty-nine animals, everything from from raptors to songbirds. So they're pretty busy there. Our other staff also did about forty-four additional education programs, many of them in concert with our regular education department, sometimes special programs that are are really based for our volunteers. And we had a hundred and fifteen workdays on our sites with site stewards. So it was a pretty good year for that. I think that number would have been higher, but we went through a hiatus with COVID nineteen where we couldn't do any work with our stewards, and hopefully we're coming out of that now. And I think I'm going to close with conservation funding. When you see the budget for natural resources, you'll often see it tied to the Natural Resource Special Revenue Fund. And that is typically how we're able to fund our larger projects through grants, through mitigations, through partnerships. So you'll often see a project, and then you'll see the funding for it tied not to operations but to some grant or some other form of funding. This year, with the help of our foundation, we were able to get a grant for management in Glacial Park, and that has been completed. We did round two with the Liberty Prairie Foundation, where we worked on the agricultural database project, and they, in fact, provided twenty thousand dollars for additional staff time for our GIS individual, so that didn't have to come out of operations. I mentioned we worked with the Farm Bureau Partnership on the bioreactor. If you haven't seen it, that's worth a look. A bioreactor is designed to help filter out nutrients before they they get into the stream systems. We completed the on-the-ground work and the permitting work for our School Springs Mitigation Bank, and we are only waiting for the mitigation banking committee to run it around to all the different agencies and sign off of it, and we'll be literally in business. And we're also a partner on a USDA land stewardship landscape scale restoration grant, which will allow us to be reimbursed for about ten thousand dollars of staff time per year that we now put into our Oak Committee and Oak Project Quirku's work across the region. So we'll be able to apply for some reimbursements for or staff for the work they're already doing. And finally, I'll close it by saying, boy, I've had an awful lot of time to think since March, and I think our whole staff has, and and you wind up trying to put what's going on in some sort of perspective, so you could just kind of deal with how strange things can get at times. I know I miss dearly seeing the staff members in my division on a daily basis and and you're just hearing about what's going on in their world. So I truly believe the first statement that momentous times don't create heroes. They're already there. They simply reveal unto the eyes of the world, and and I would say that's the district staff. And I can't say how proud I am of them in every division. You can't work with a better group of people under the weirdest of circumstances. And the second quote, I think, is that we're changed. We're all changed, and there's no way we couldn't be changed by what we've gone through in the past year. And I think I heard someone make this statement earlier in the year, and I believe it's true. We're beginning to understand that the future we want that lies before us really begins within us. And the world has changed in a fundamental way. And I think in a fundamental way that's good for conservation. So I'll close with that, and if anyone has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Ed.
Thanks, Ed.
Thank you, Ed.
What a what a lot of interesting projects going on there.
I have one question with regarding to the bats, which is a real sad story. In two thousand thirteen, we had a ten thousand, one thousand fifty-nine. Two thousand eighteen, we had forty-seven, and then in nineteen, we had eighty. Is that an uptick or just a do you think it's an uptick or just a a positive upswing? What do you think?
Well, another year, Dad will tell, but but typically, when you have the kind of diseases like white nose that have affected an animal species, we'll use we'll use what happened with birds and West Nile. You'll see a plummet in populations. And then the fact that that if you have a large enough population, some immunity begins to occur within those populations. So what we're hoping for is that we're beginning to see a rebound in bat populations, but we're not going to know that for a number of years. It could be counting, you know, just a better count that year. It could be we just happen to have more individuals, or it could be that hopefully, we're at the beginning of a recovery.
Good deal. Okay, thanks, Ed.
Stay tuned is the word on that one.
Very good. Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, we're going to be able to move on from there. Let's see, where do trustees report? Any trustees have anything they'd like to report at this time?
Well, like usually I do, I saw this in a Wiki while remember that we're storing the cycling without age rickshaws at some of our buildings? Well, I read the story that there was an elderly lady getting a rickshaw on the Hebrew and Trail. And this she had several trips, but this time they were talking about opera. It turns out that the elderly lady loved opera. Well, the lady bicycling was an opera singer, so she stopped at Goose Lake and sang opera. And the lady, you know, reverberating off the water and echoing, and the lady said that was the most exciting thing she's happened to in her life. So I thought that was cool. And the other things is for for our Facebook and stuff, I saw it was followed by five exclamation points, two hundred and thirty-six shares watching for deer, watching the deer while driving. And it reached eighteen thousand six hundred people, and the comment was that's in huge numbers. So thank you to Communications for doing that. That's it.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I was just going to say that we jump on volunteer opportunities as quickly as we can, and I being on the list, we have a volunteer opportunity for helping with the bioreactor. And they set that out and for people to go out there and help monitor and take recordings and get that into the database. And I guess it came out on the middle and middle of the afternoon on Wednesday, and it was full by the end of the day. So yeah, so it's it's a there's a lot of people out there that want to help. So it was a great idea.
Yeah, I have I have a new neighbor, and actually, he's texted me a few times wanting to get get involved and just moved in a couple of months ago, and he he's contacted me about getting in just new to the county and wants to get involved right away. So that's that's great.
Yeah, cool.
Okay, is Bob with us tonight?
He is not.
Okay, we haven't seen Bob for a while. Is he all right?
He was, I believe so. I have not heard. I believe he was at the board meeting at the county earlier in the week, so we probably should connect with him, maybe, John. That would
Sure. Yeah, we'll do that. Okay, and I don't have anything else to report right now, other than I'm done combining, so I have some I have more time now than I had. So that's good. All right, that gets us to public comments. One, do we have public out there that would like to comment?
I don't. I don't see anything.
Okay, thank you. Gets us to a consent agenda. Is there any? Nobody's contacted me. They want to poll anything. Is there anyone that has anything they need to have polled?
Yes, John, very shortly on twelve point two B, please.
Twelve point two B, the approval of those minutes?
Oh, no, that would be the acceptance of the general fund.
I'm sorry. I didn't go down far enough. The acceptance of what, Dave?
The acceptance of the general fund budget variance report as of September thirty.
Okay, so you'd like that polled?
Yes.
All right, Lynn, could you read the consent agenda minus twelve point two B? I mean, would you like to make that motion? I guess, Lynn, we always we always, maybe you don't want to make that motion.
Well, unmute myself, and yes, I will move, but I got to find it. So my reading it from I'm going to read it from my file here. So just one second. I am sorry, just one second. There's way too many. Oh, that's just going to be on our main agenda, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, let me find it. Elizabeth, can I use that off of the? annotated? No.
Everyone's easier for you, Lynn. They're both the same.
So in the board packet for this board, I am not seeing it. Wait a second.
Or what we're seeing on the screen, is there any way you can just keep scrolling through that?
Lynn, it's the second one. It's the second one on the board packet. There's a November nineteenth packet, and then the November nineteenth, four point nine megabyte modified six days ago. That's it. I just looked at it.
Okay, well, just one second. Is it on the screen right now?
No.
On the screen, you should be seeing the, I've got each of the items that you're going to read, and I'll just screen through that.
Okay, and you'll screen through it. That's fine. Yeah, because I'm, yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I had it before, but it's not coming up. Okay. So I move that we approve the consent agenda, which includes the following. Twelve point one, approval of minutes. Twelve point one A, October fifteen, twenty twenty Committee of the Whole. Twelve point one B, October twenty, twenty twenty Public Session. Twelve point one C, September seventeen, twenty twenty Executive Session. Twelve point two, Treasurers Report. Twelve point two A, October thirty-one, twenty twenty Fiscal Year. We're going to hold off on the variance report, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Move this out of the way. Twelve point three, Resolution Number twenty-one hundred, a resolution establishing the regular meeting dates of the Board of Trustees of the McHenry County Conservation District for calendar year twenty twenty-one. Twelve point four, Resolution Number twenty-one oh one, a resolution rejecting the sole bid for the fuel management program upgrades at four district shops and the Brookdale Administrative Office received from Howard Lee and Sons Incorporated of Cherry Valley, Illinois. Twelve point five, Resolution Number twenty-one oh two, a resolution amending Resolution Number twenty dash sixty-seven, authorizing the purchase of three replacement vehicles directly off of the Illinois State Bid Purchasing Contract. Ooh, number eighteen dash one forty-six CMS V O S S four P four twenty-six for an additional seven thousand for a total of costs not to exceed ninety-seven thousand. Twelve point six, Resolution Number twenty-one oh three, resolution authorizing the establishment of a new position of agricultural ecologist, technical professional, grade eighteen, in the Land Preservation Natural Resources Division, effective April one, twenty twenty-one, and the discontinuation of the position of Agricultural Services Coordinator, administrative grade seventeen. Twelve point seven, Resolution Number twenty-one oh four, a resolution amending the title and position description for the IT Specialist Administrative Assistant, Administration Grade Fifteen to IT Specialist Administration Grade Fifteen, effective December first, twenty twenty. Twelve point eight, Resolution Number twenty-one oh five, a resolution approving the restructuring of the Police Department by reducing personnel from three to two police sergeants and authorizing the executive director to adjust compensation accordingly to commensurate with the additional responsibilities duties effective December one, twenty twenty, for a total wage adjustment of five thousand for each position. Twelve point nine, Resolution Number twenty-one oh six, a resolution amending the position description for the Community Relations Specialist, Administration Grade Fifteen, effective December one, twenty twenty. Twelve point ten, Resolution Number twenty-one oh seven, a resolution authorizing the executive director to execute an intergovernmental agreement permitting snow removal from the Prairie Trail Route fourteen north to Crystal Lake Avenue by the city of Crystal Lake. Twelve point eleven, Resolution Number twenty-one oh eight, a resolution advancing the Prairie Trail McHenry resurfacing and wayfaring signage, phase one, to the McHenry County Conservation Foundation for funding consideration. Twelve point twelve, Resolution Number twenty-one oh nine, a resolution formally acknowledging the McHenry County Conservation Foundation and the McHenry County Conservation District's community seed collection program at High Point Conservation Area in honor of donors George D. and Marilyn A. Johnson and Richard J. and Renee L. Dankirk. Twelve thirteen, Ordinance Number twenty-nine nine three, an ordinance authorizing the execution of the James and Bonnie Leahy Grant of Conservation Easement. Twelve point fourteen, Authorization to renegotiate two pasture leases and one row crop lease at the Pleasant Valley Conservation Area for a one-year extension. Twelve fifteen, Resolution Number twenty-one ten, a resolution authorizing the use of unexpended budgeted funds from the exterior repairs project at the Prairie View Education Center to complete identified projects at the Prairie View Education Center, including insulation, water damage repairs, and painting, purchasing of siding and alarm modifications for a total cost not to exceed forty-two thousand two hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Twelve point one six, Resolution Number twenty-one eleven, a resolution accepting the twenty nineteen Natural Heritage Stewardship Report.
It was second.
Second. Can I roll call with them, please?
Trustee Dom?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Brand?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Hunting?
Yes. Okay, then that'll bring us back to Dave, your, your exception to the.
Let's do this for, I should, I'm going to make a motion, and it will, after we sec, if it's second then, but I'm moved to accept the twenty twenty-one General Fund Budget Variance Report as of September thirty, twenty twenty, second quarter.
Okay, can I have a second for that?
I'll second.
Okay. The comment that I have is I saw one, and I'm sorry to say, I mean, no disrespect, but it was for legal services. We budgeted thirty-one thousand two hundred and eighty, and the actual spent was double that, sixty-three thousand one hundred and seventy-two for almost thirty-two thousand dollars over. That's startling, and then to exaggerate it, I see in our budget that we're going to increase the legal by eighteen percent, and my whole point is I think we're going the wrong way. I'd like, I don't know what's going on. I do acknowledge litigation was a big issue. The other issue where we needed legal assistance, I totally get that. So maybe this is just that, but I'd like to watch the budget for legal from here on out, so that's my only comment. It just kind of took me by surprise.
Okay, so that was, that was, you just wanted to comment on that, then?
Yes, that's all I wanted to do.
Okay, anybody else have any other comments? I guess I have one is that I'm afraid that that may be the trend that we see. I think the longer you're around and the more you, the more exposure you have, the more likely these these kind of things pop up, and it's unfortunate because really seems like a big chunk of that was on a lawsuit that just seemed like one person was not thinking about the good of all his neighbors and anyone else that is in the surrounding area.
I agree with you. Same with the other one, someone not caring.
Yeah, talk, cost the, cost everyone a lot of money. And it's unfortunate, and, yeah, actually in both of them, when you get right down to it. So anyway, I'll call a roll on that unless somebody else has something else they'd like to say.
Sorry.
Okay, go ahead, call it all.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Brand?
Yes.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Dom?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Hunting?
Yes. Thank you. The motion passes unanimously. Okay, um, let's see, where does that move us on to other board members? So we have the internal audit. Has anybody got any bills that they've pulled?
I did, but if anybody has something they'd like to do, let that go first.
I had a question on the vendor summary about a liquor license application. We paid a hundred and twenty-five dollars to the McHenry County Treasurer. Why do we need a liquor license application, or why do we need a liquor license?
So I can, I can get that, and Wendy can confirm the program. So education has done programs where they may have wine or beer, and they did create a special license at the county, so we could provide that, but there's still a fee associated with it unless we could get that waived from the county, but we have to pay that fee. And we also get that for the Great Outdoor Beer Trail.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I would like to recommend we look at vendor M two zero nine two, McCann Industries for fifty-seven dollars and sixteen cents. Another one would be vendor P seventy-four twenty-eight, P Buddy's North for twenty-one dollars and fifty cents. And then vendor T eight nine four seven, Top and Drop Tree Service for two thousand dollars.
Okay, sounds good. Anybody else have any?
I don't necessarily need to pull this, but I was curious as to what is CDW Government, Inc.?
That's where the office, a lot of our office supplies come through CDW.
Oh, okay, because it's only twenty-three this month, but it's paid to date twenty-seven thousand, so I was just, I was just curious as to who that was. All right.
Okay, so we've taken care of that. And Bill, I'll turn it over to you to make the next two motions.
Okay, the I'm gonna move then that we approve the bills payable for the month of October twenty twenty. That's item thirteen point one. And also thirteen point one A, the treasurer's internal audit. Thirteen point one B, consideration to approve the payment to conserve FS on submission of Bill's report for period ending October thirty-first, twenty twenty, and thirteen one C, consideration.
We have to just do thirteen point one B first.
Yeah, we're gonna have to take them separately for the roll call, please.
All right, so.
So I've got the motion from Bill for thirteen point one B. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second from Lynn. Okay, can I have the roll, please?
Trustee Brand?
Yes.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Dom?
Yes.
Trustee Hunting?
And I'll abstain. Okay, now, Bill, if I could have a motion for thirteen, and that passes six, six to nothing with one abstention, and we'll go to thirteen one C, please.
Okay, so I move that we accept or that we consider to approve the payment of balance of Bill's on submission of Bill's report for the period ending October thirty-one, twenty twenty.
And I could use a second?
I'll second.
Linda?
Yes.
Okay, Linda has a second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Dom?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Brand?
Yes.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
And Trustee Hunting?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Okay. So we're moving on to, I've lost my notes, and the screen's nuts, moving up.
Sorry.
Okay, Executive Director, Elizabeth, and we added more to your report.
We did, and I am going to be as efficient as possible here on the items, so let's go from the Committee of the Whole where we left off and the outreach to newly elected officials. So everyone knows we had a election and things changing at the federal, state, and at the county level. And just as we got through, we're getting into municipal elections that are petitions are circulating again. But we do have some new faces that we are going to want to get to meet. Megan and I have been working on letters, and those will go out tomorrow, welcoming each of our newly elected officials to their positions. We are also sending out letters of those that are leaving office and thanking them for their service. It is always a great opportunity to get an introduction and encourage a follow-up to get some meetings scheduled with them, specifically with the new county board chairman. And so if there's other strategies that the board would like to undertake, we talked a little bit about, obviously, kind of the position of the district where we are financially. Obviously, our role where we've had in COVID this year with the community wanting to get outdoors, and so I guess I'm looking to say, do you have some ideas or thoughts, or would you be willing to, you know, set up some meetings with me to do a Zoom call even? I know we're not meeting in person due to COVID, but they take office locally December first at the county level, and so we'll come up in front of them for the first time with our budget in February, so I'd like to be able to use the time to make those, make those connections.
Elizabeth, with regard to the county, when do they take their new seats?
December first.
Okay, so I'd be willing to help. I'd be, I would volunteer to help Zoom. I don't want to meet in person, but I'll help. Good. Do you know, do you happen to know any of the people that have just been elected, Dave? Is there any?
The first time in my life, I don't know who was elected and who wasn't. I've lost total track of it because, yeah, I'll, yeah, so I don't even know. About the chairman, but that's it.
Elizabeth, maybe you could get a, for all the letters that you're sending out, maybe you could get a list of all those people to each of us, and then we would, in case we've, we we happen to know somebody, but we don't know they were elected, or we have an acquaintance with them, or we're two people removed from them or something that we can, we can work on.
But she's going to write letters, so we'll see who the, she's writing letters to welcoming and who.
Goodbye. As long as we get, yeah, as long as we get a copy of those letters or a list or whatever, however it comes down to us.
Yeah, I'll get to a roster and who's coming, who's going, what district. You know, I'll have all of that, and I'll get that out to you tomorrow's Friday, so you'll have that tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else have anything?
That one. So any other ideas on outreach with the elected officials?
Well, I do think it would be helpful to get on the new county board chairman's appointment list, even if it's just for a video conference and perhaps to, you know, follow up the letter with an offer to meet and introduce yourself, Elizabeth, the executive director, and perhaps John is president and because of the budget issue, perhaps to have Andy involved and and just, you know, offer the opportunity for him to reach out to us and give us an oppor, you know, make the most of the occasion so that we don't go into the presentation to the board sort of cold.
Yes, yeah, that's.
And, you know, you can provide him with a summary of similar to what Andy has provided us. You know, where the budget's district has been in the last, you know, fifteen years of leading up to the change in the real estate market and all of the impact that's had on on budgeting. I'm sure he's familiar with that as with reference to the county, or he'll be getting familiar with it. But I think if we go in offering him that information from our point of view, it may help to set up the approval process.
Definitely, and I think also we want to go in and discuss with him what procedurally, how he would like all our information put forth to wherever, whether he wants it all to come to him, or if he'd like to go right to every county board member, or or where he wants, you know, how he wants to proceed going forward, because the past chairman definitely had a, had a oh, he had a set way of how he wanted it done, and we'll have to see how this, how the new president would like to proceed, I guess. That's where I'm at with it, anyway.
Well, if you keep getting ideas or that, I'll get that out to you tomorrow, and then we'll work to getting those things scheduled over the next time, so that, so I thank you for that. The other item we had was scheduling, and John, you had mentioned before with the over the the next time. So that, and so I thank you for that. Uh the other item we had was scheduling uh and John, uh you had mentioned before with the I A P D board self evaluation. So um I know with COVID, everything's remote, so I don't know where and I don't know if anybody's made contact with Peter Murphy. I believe there was some discussion after the first of the, you know, after January, after the holidays. Um was there a date or do you want me to send out a doodle?
Well, what I'd like to know is how long do they need? What block of time are they gonna need? And then we can uh do a poo- doodle or whatever that's called.
Doodle pole, right.
So how long does it, how long is the thing? Does anybody know?
He told me it would take a couple hours, I believe, two to three hours, I think.
Okay. Well, now that I know that, so now I can know if I have time. So, yeah, after January, it'd be good.
Right. I I told him why I when I finished harvest, I would get all, I would contact him or Elizabeth would, and we would start to set up a date for January, February. Um I was hoping at that time by then that the COVID would be getting better and not worse, and he'd be able to uh meet with us at at our, one of our locations, but uh um that doesn't look like it's heading in the right direction for us. But um we'll, when we talk to him, we'll see what we can do. Yes, Lynn?
Have you, have you actually had an an opportunity to talk to him about his availability in January? Because I know several months ago, he was about six months out.
Well, when I talked to him, uh.
So I don't know, you know.
When I talked, when I talked to him, uh whatever, whenever is I, you know, a couple of months ago, I told him that I probably contacted him in November or December about a January, February meeting, and he said that would be plenty of time and that he probably even December would be fine. So that that's now unless his schedule has changed drastically, I don't know that, but uh last I talked to him, he he thought that if I contacted him now, that he would have a date for us or some dates for us to choose from.
Oh, no, that's perfect. And it could be just that things have not been as full because of not being able to meet in person. So maybe.
I sure know I've, I sure know I've had a lot of meetings canceled for January.
Maybe the time has opened up. Well, that's, no, that's great. Okay.
Okay, that that's where it was last I I talked to him anyway. Lynn, if I had pushed it out the first part of March, I would do that, but I'll 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 see how many dates he could he can give us to choose from, and then we can, we can get back to everyone here and 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 uh see what what works for the board.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm game.
Thank you.
So I'll wait, John, you we'll talk and and we'll figure out once you talk to figure out a doodle on that.
Sounds good.
The uh went under the distance with a legislative amendment, and so I did some research sent to them. I have not yet heard back, but I just wanted to let you know. Basically, they've been working. They didn't get the grant because there were concerns expressed um by the city of Marengo on um access or what happens after they leave outside the boundaries and if the launch is in their area. And so wanting to get some provisions and the recreational use uh land and water act um there at one point, uh we had worked fight and fought many, many, many years because it had been amended at one point and uh had unintended consequences and therefore um private landowners couldn't let recreational use on their property. So that did get corrected. So I did provide her with that. I haven't followed up, so I don't know if anybody's having conversations, but as soon as I know a little bit more and if they can articulate what the ask is, I said I would be happy to bring that to the Illinois Association of Conservation and Forest Preserve districts to see. You know, if you're gonna go for a legislative change like this, it's gonna require more than just us. It would require our other partners from the other forest preserve districts. Um and I would then bring it forward uh in January, uh if it could be refined to our legislative policy part of that group. And then, of course, the alliance and and there's just a lot of others that we can piggyback and and talk with Jason Anselman and Peter Murphy at I A P D to see if this is something that could get on the legislative agenda. But um but it needs to be defined because I think what she's asking for has somewhat been solved, but there's other areas with waterways that become a little bit more complicated and would require a lot more research. And um so before I spend any more time on that, I just I just want to make everybody aware here. And once they can articulate what they need, then then I'm happy to pitch in and help where I can. On that. Um let's see here. Then on the uh COVID uh update, uh of course, uh the governor, um we had moved last Thursday, there was an announcement, and so we moved into our level four uh with passive access uh clothing visitor centers and suspending programs through the end of day on uh December fourth. The governor now has come out and statewide mandatory, as you're probably aware, with the tier three uh resurgence. Um what we did learn and which we did not know, there was all this imminent threat. So we took an action to move in as part of our pandemic plan to move into our level four. And so if I'm reading the resurgence area um in the tier, that it would allow programming for group sizes ten and under um as long as they're wearing masks and they're maintaining social distance and they're outdoors. And so um and visitor centers could also open as long as our capacity. So we're gonna reevaluate the pandemic group. Uh we'll meet again on December second. And in the event that things stay in the right trajectory, um then we will likely move ourselves back to where we were to um reopening the visitor centers and and resuming programming. So I just wanted to keep the board aware. Um I also wanted to share that the staff continues to do an amazing job. As you know, we had a little bit of a scare um where uh we've had no uh transmission uh in the workplace. Um the experiences occurred in individuals' homes. And then um with that, that puts team members out on quarantine. And uh we did have some team members that tested positive. And uh in the workplace, then based if you if you have that, you can't remain your social distance and you're not wearing a mask. And then you put yourself in a vulnerable area, and that's where we had to start sending some people home. So that's why we backed it back out and um keeping everybody safe. And soon as we did that and everybody on high alert, everybody's been well and all good. So that's the good news. So our plan's working and uh and thus tonight while we're remote again, just to to keep everybody well. So I think that was that. What else? We want to find a date to um talk about a finance committee meeting. Um thoughts? I know, Andy, we want to get something sooner than later, since we only had one meeting this week. I I I throw out there, I I don't know if Tuesday of next week would be something that everybody would be open to, since it would be a regularly scheduled.
Do Tuesday of next week, sure.
I've seen, yes.
I'll be available. That would be fine.
Anyone not available? Nope, hearing nobody, that that sounds like uh it should work.
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock, just uh President Henning, five o'clock, you think?
Sure, unless somebody has a problem with that, we'll blame for that.
Okay.
So we'll do five o'clock Zoom, everybody. And so that's great on that. Um let's see here. I'm just real quickly going through everything to make sure I've got everything to share with you. Um I think we have it covered, so. That's all I.
The agenda, Elizabeth, was a legislative update.
Well, yeah, so the new elected officers and um you know, the legislative uh again with veto session, I need to fall back in on that. I know that um I don't know with COVID into where the state is going, but there's a lot of changes in 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 new officers. I really don't have much of a legislative update beyond what I've shared with you. So.
Okay, so we've made it through executive director's report. We'll move on to the committee reports. Uh Lynn, I believe you're Fox River.
Right, yes. So my on, Mike, can you hear me?
Yes, you're you're.
Okay. All right, so FREP, um just kind of in keeping with the theme of this evening, um in November, and I would have already talked about the fact that it was coming up, we did have FREP did have um a program on sustainable and regenerative agriculture. And Brad was one of our speakers um uh to talk about our experience here. Joe Bybee from Illinois Department of Agriculture was on and Olga Leandres was from the Delta Institute was on and kind of gets into that same theme. This is obviously going around in a lot of different organizations about how to be more sustainable. Um and it was a very good presentation that has um should be out there in a recording if anybody's interested uh through the Fox River Ecosystem Partnership website. Um coming up in December, normally they have, and and not too many people really jump in on this, is their holiday gathering. Um and in the past, I think four years, they've been trying to go and to places where there's been to restaurants where they could meet and and have more of a social gathering um at restaurants that rely on locally grown food are more for more farm to table and sustainable practices. And in the past, they've been at Hardware in North Aurora, Blue Root and West Dundee, Duke's Ale House, for the, many of you know about that, and Crystal Lake and the River's Edge in Batavia. Um this year being on Zoom, um it people are just gonna come together uh and and the idea here is to highlight what everyone's doing in their own personal spaces, maybe in your yards of how you're trying to make um your space more sustainable. A lot of people have been turning to native plantings in their yard to draw uh wildlife and birds. Um and so the idea would be to share some of that information as well as share and highlight maybe another local restaurant that you're going to order from uh for that gathering. But so that is it. Anything through FREP needs to be registered in advance.
Okay, thank you. Uh Dave, Crep?
Well, it turns out I'm becoming the worst representative to Crep. I missed the uh ten thirty meeting, but I just got hold of uh her contact information, so I will call her and make sure that I'm notified of future meetings.
Okay, thank you. Uh Ed, Rap, have they done anything since last month?
Yes, Rap was adopted by the county board on the seventeenth.
Okay.
So I think we can probably pull this one from our agenda going forward.
All right, we're we're done. There's there's very few things in government that ever get done, so that's uh where it comes to an end. So that might, that that's unusual happening. So, okay, thank you, Ed. Is there anything uh that got changed at the very end that we should be aware of, or did go through pretty much as it was presented?
Pretty much as presented. Um I will, I will review to to see if there is anything that we should be concerned about, but I think they think that we're changing were fairly minor.
Okay, sounds good. Elizabeth, you have Chi- Chicago, Chicago Wilderness?
Yes, the Chicago Wilderness, um we are working, I think I've shared before, uh the green vision. We have seven goals. And uh we are refining and fine tuning so that by the early part of January um we can begin to share and begin working groups on these areas and develop metrics. And um we did have a call under the land or habitat preservation and discussion. So uh thank you to Ed set in on that call with a lot of uh other land managers uh and agencies around the region uh and uh to talk about what's the appropriate habitat and uh just the significance of COVID and its impact uh to everyone in the region. Um another area that has been moving with the assistance uh is the agricultural goal. So it's really to add to your just uh presentation that you made today, all these areas at a higher level. We're sometimes so focused on boots on the ground here in McHenry County, but when you're talking conservation, when you're talking water, when you're talking climate, it runs the full four state region and um we're a big player in that space and working collaborative with all our partners. So um our goals and C map, uh even looking at some of their visioning uh that they have on some of these areas and some of the goals that we've identified in our strategic plan, they all are interwoven together. So we're not just creating something, we're each doing our part to move, you know, the the ball down the field, so to speak. So um the alliance does that. And uh so there'll be a lot, I think, shaping up and exciting work to come and some hopefully some funding uh in uh twenty twenty one. That's all I got.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Pat from Bureau?
There's two things. Uh Dan Ziller, the president, he did a a video on uh moving equipment on the highway, roadways, um how dangerous it is. Um and then the other thing was they talked about uh getting a flow meter for the bioreactor. Um see how much flow there was and uh I don't know, that's about all I got.
Okay, so did they decide to do that?
Yeah, and then they're supposed, they're supposed to contact uh, I don't, I don't know who, but.
Okay, so the district should be expecting a call from somebody from Farm Bureau about probably Dan.
Will it be more than volume? Will it be uh some sort of water quality?
Well, they just, they just talked, we just talked about volume right now.
Okay.
Yes.
I I think Dave isn't, I think somebody's having to go out and take uh and I think, is that what the volunteers are for, to go out there and take samples?
Readings.
That that are readings and and take some samples and send them in to see what the quality is?
Uh yeah, I can answer that. Dan, Dan was already in contact with Brad and uh it needs to be monitored on a weekly basis, which we don't have a staff time for, so um that's why we put out the call for volunteers. So that was very encouraging.
Cool.
Good. Excellent. Glad to hear there's follow up on that. Um Foundation, Linda? Oh, you're muted.
Yep, sorry. Um it's cuz I have a snoring dog sitting next to me. Um, nothing, we haven't met.
Okay, I didn't think there'd been a meeting, but I didn't know if we had any, any, any anybody call you or anything, so there's nothing there. Okay.
Nothing. Thank you.
Okay, Lynn, I think you're up next with Macog.
Oh, yeah, nothing's really come through, so I don't know. I, you know, um I did not reach out to them. Nothing has come through in the email as far as meeting or anything like that at this point.
Sure.
And Elizabeth might know better because you being in touch with um uh Shaylan, but.
Yeah, I don't believe, because there's, there definitely have not been meeting. Uh I do believe, well, no, that was something else. That was a the mayor's caucus, I was gonna say mayor caucus, but
Yeah.
that's suffered on the card, so.
Yeah, so nothing at this point.
How about Green Drinks?
Well, Green Drinks, again, we're getting into holiday season, so um last, I think I misspoke last time. Last time I said regenerative agriculture, I think that was my go to. Um really what we had in um November, that was the first Wednesday of the month, um was Sherry Doyle, who is uh heads the Center for Agrarian Learning at the McHenry County College. Uh she came in and spoke about their program and uh the learning opportunities available and the partnerships that are being developed um region um countywide. And uh so that was a good discussion. Going into December, again, Green Drinks is the first Wednesday of the month. It is on Zoom. You do have to um you know, register to get the link. Um this one is going to be just for fun. Uh Damian Arms is the head bartender with J W Marriott Chicago, um who is gonna come in and and discuss um different concoctions, uh trying to look at different things that from a sustainable kind of uh way as well, but he has had uh twenty years in the food and beverage industry. And I'm sorry, I'm having trouble seeing this. Um he's that been at the Ritz Carlton uh Half Moon Bay where he rose uh to work with um a renowned chef there. He took an interest in the beverage side of things and started getting into that uh end of of the um food industry. Um so he's gonna come in and and I think ahead of time, they might even give you some of the ingredients that you can go out and try to get you know, the ingredients for yourself, and he'll walk you through how to how to make it. But that's gonna be um on December second and
Cool.
Yeah, a little bit different. And that's it.
And thank you. Uh Shared Investment Study, Elizabeth?
No report, no update.
Okay, uh John on MAP?
Uh yeah, there's a meeting uh earlier today. The group uh is uh after taking most of this year off due to uh the pandemic uh is uh started to look at reestablishing some goals for next year and actually starting to accomplish some things again. Uh one of the things that was discussed is, I think I reported before about uh the McHenry County Council of Mayors has embarked on with the help of McHenry County Department of Transportation a countywide bike and pedestrian plan. It kicked off uh this uh this week uh with some initial meetings and uh they're going to be pro- uh going through the process of gathering information, public meetings, you know, Zoom meetings, whatever it is over the next basically twelve months, we're gonna try to do this um and then have something uh wrapped up uh by a year from now.
Okay, so you're in the planning stages for next year. Uh visit McHenry County, Elizabeth?
Yeah, we. Yeah, we had a board meeting just a week ago and we're working on a strategic plan. The focus in really on destination marketing, and I think I mentioned this before about the outdoors and the role and the importance that, that we're playing. The local push right now is with local businesses that are suffering from COVID to encourage shopping during the holidays locally with gift certificates. I was talking with Trustee Thomas earlier to see if she does in her business gift certificates and experiences, we know. So if, if you're looking for those, we're trying to really promote that and try to get an inventory of our local business and shops. And of course, us that, that use the outdoor economy to connect is also key and maybe somehow to bridge that in the awareness of the outdoors. So that's been going on. The other thing that I didn't mention before, and if I could, I'm going to step back while I've got it here, is I just wanted to give a shout out and thanks. And how could I forget? I think I alerted the board in an email after it was done, but the work that was on the Peachin closing. So the Peachin closed, that was last week. So congratulations, that's done. My kudos to Andy for his work with all the financing, to Val at the closing, to get all the work that was being and all the accounting staff. There was a lot of work that was going on and of course, the board to, to get us through the finish line to get that done. But so we own Peachin. And then the other shout out with the local cures, John Kramer had worked the lead on the reimbursement. And as we talked last month, we weren't going for the law enforcement just based on the way the language is repaired. But we did get our second grant of $8,292 that came in today. And this is on top of the $30,568 we received a month ago, which has about, John's reporting $6,000 before we exhaust the allotment. So that would give us our full allotment. And then based on some things that they've learned and where we're at, we're going to submit an additional request to extend our allotment by another 20,000. So again, I think it's a great job for all the extra work and, and we're coding things and getting the resources back where we can. So thank you to John and Jean and, and everyone else on the team. Everybody's been doing a great job with that.
Great.
Any other outreach anybody's taken part of in the last month? Okay, that brings us to public comments. Do we have any more public out there than what we had? No one?
Doesn't look that way.
Okay, then let me, let me move that we go into executive session pursuant to SUSE 2C 21 minutes and 2C 5 Real Estate of the Open Meetings Act.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Is there a second?
I have a second.
I'll second.
Linda, I had you first. So you're the second. I need a roll call vote.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Dom?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Brandt?
Yes.
Trustee Henning?
Yes. Okay, we're going to executive session. Elizabeth, did you get my text?
No, let's see.
I, I do not have the password or the.
Okay, I will send that to you. Thank you. Appreciate that.
I just need the password and the code or whatever it is. I, I forgot to get that before out of the meeting.
Well, if you can log into the site, Megan sent us click links to all the.
Yeah, I'll send it out. Anybody else? I'll just do a quick email to everybody. John, I'll text you. So you've got.
Be on the flip side.
Okay, everybody that's leaving, thank you. We will be having action out of executive session, but that's on the agenda. But that's all. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. We need a roll call.
Yes, we do.
Trustee Campbell?
Here. Trustee Thomas?
Here.
Trustee Brandt?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Dom? And Trustee Fritz?
Here.
And Trustee Henning?
Yes, I'm here.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to pass ordinance 20994 authorizing the execution of the Wilson Buckles Gift Agreement.
Thank you, Dave. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Lynn, you have a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, I'll have a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Brandt?
Yes.
And Trustee Henning?
Yes, motion carries unanimously.
Night, everybody.
Adjourned first. Wait, hold on, wait, hold on.
It's in a hurry to get out of here. Are you like me? I haven't eaten supper yet.
Yeah.
The monsters are out.
Anyway, I, is there any other business anyone has or any information? If not, I wish all of you a happy Thanksgiving in whatever form it takes this year and hope you can meet up with your families somehow or some way.
It'll be Zoom, so.
See you next Tuesday, too. We got to see each other next Tuesday.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
We are going to see each other Tuesday. So I can wish you a happy Thanksgiving then.
Thank you, John. Happy Thanksgiving, anybody. I just adjourned.
Okay, Dave makes a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Pat, okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Brandt?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Henning?
Yes, we are adjourned.
See you Tuesday.
See you Tuesday.
Thank you. Stay well. Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.